Okay. So need to recon- like to reconvene the October 10 regular meeting. Next up, we had planning board update? Did we? Is that was? Did we table that? Joe Jones?
Yes. I'm here.
Welcome. All right. I wasn't sure you were gonna present. But welcome. Thank you.
I'm here. I'm here. Last month's meeting was very light for us. And compared to some of the previous meetings. We made some good headway on the land use plan. And back to the- we're about to the point where we're waiting. I'll sort of transition. We've gone to transition into almost to a point of waiting on the results of the resident survey. And we have a subcommittee working on the resident survey. Because we felt that it would be more productive for three people versus seven people and, you know, back and forth and back and forth, and then we'll get back together. And they've met, and they're meeting with COG, and so we're making good progress there. Which the earlier conversations brought up something that I'd forgotten about. One or all of the members of the council have asked some of the old questions be incorporated into the new survey. We'd like- and we've read the old survey, and we've read several surveys and stuff. We couldn't really focus on what you and you felt like you'd like to see re-asked. So y'all could give us a list of the ones that you think that you need, that ought to be incorporated. That's the first part of it. The second part of it, I was very interested in the comments about the branding and the questions in the whole survey and how they incorporate. Because we read it, did not even focus on that part of, you know, or how that piece of it. And so, you know, we'll need to make sure that that's part of the new survey.
Could I ask you a question? That joint meeting we'd have, had with the planning board, the direction we gave was use the old survey and then add to it. So it wasn't take pieces of the old survey. I thought the way we left it was use the old survey, but add, if there's questions you want to add, add them. And the reason being, we wanted to see the results as they compared to the 2013 survey.
That's not the way- well, I'm not disagreeing with you. That's not the way we recall it, or at least that's not the way that we understood. You know, we were thinking that, you know, some piece, you know, include, and I'll just arbitrarily use a number of, a dozen of the, two dozen questions, or whatever, incorporate those. But we didn't come away with use all the questions and then. But if that's what you want, you know, that's a different direction.
I'm not sure that's what we-
Do you remember or recall that being?
I thought that was the goal, was to see how it compares to the last survey, but we had new questions too.
I will say that it's, given that we still have all the same data sets from the old survey, just in terms of, you know, being able to measure the differences and how things have changed, whether it's demographics, or people's attitudes towards different types of development, it would be great to be able to do that. But I also know that the last survey was, you know, it was long.
That would have been my comment, was that, you know, we're gonna take the last one that was relatively long, and then add to it, and just make it, you know, that much longer. Or we're going to, I don't know which questions to include there.
Some of those questions, because, to get too technical, because of what, of recoding, some of the questions that were asked that were sort of open-ended, those can take a lot longer to process as well. So, things that have finite number of answers in that last survey, if, from what I understand of like the current contract, those might be easier for it to process. I'll just say this for the record, since we're talking about it a little bit. My only concern is that, so I think that that last survey can be pared down to the most essential, and the ones that were most successful at getting a response rate. And you can do, I mean, even go back and measure that, right? Some questions get a better response rate than others. And that was the first one we had done for a long time. So there's that. In addition to that, though, it almost sounds like there's a need to gauge a lot of other interests and other topics. So we might all want to talk about whether this is solely based on land use, because that alone is a huge issue, and to what degree we really want to start going into branding and/or, you know, greenways we talked about the other day, or whether those are separate projects. I don't have an answer or a feeling, but I'm just sort of watching over the last few meetings, everyone saying, "Well, just add that to the survey. We'll just add that to the survey."
Yeah, and then, you know, if we forget it too big, it's gonna, it's gonna be totally in fact difficult, so I don't want to spend that much time.
Right.
Do you want to give us what you got, plus the old survey, and you just want us to check, put a checkmark, or what we like and what we don't like?
If we can get just the questions from the old survey, you know, maybe, or some other way that you-
What company did the old survey? Who did it?
We did it in-house.
We did it in-house.
Oh, in-house.
And, you know, we-
Just because of my-
You know, we've been working with just the basic questions instead of the detailed survey and stuff, but, you know, not that we couldn't get it, but-
What's helpful to you? You want us just to take it and make notes and give it to you?
That would be helpful, yeah.
Okay.
And then if we've got questions, you know, then, you know, but, you know, right now, we're just, I'm afraid, you know, that we don't have a firm direction.
Who's on the subcommittee?
Kim, Mark Peterson, or Kelly.
Kelly Mark Peterson, and Tom-
Tom.
Trump.
Oh, okay.
They've all been here a while.
Well, yeah, no, it's both.
As a good next?
Yeah. It's older than you, and so-
Okay.
So we'll give you notes.
I might be able to maybe help. I have the old questions. We can probably figure out which ones could be deleted out. I don't know.
If he just wants the piece of paper back?
Or if we can get, you know-
Can you just send it to us, and we'll make comments?
You all want to look at the old questions and pick out some that you want to see?
You know, not the old survey, but the old question.
Well, I think the old and your new, right? We need to-
Oh, they have newer questions too?
Y'all have clearly the newer ones.
Yeah, we're working on that. But I mean, before we get there, you know, instead of coming in here and saying, you know, here's all the questions that we want to ask, you know, it would be helpful if we, you know, as far as the old survey from each one of you, we think, or you think that this one's important, and this one, and this one, or is more appropriate to-
Give you like a priority list?
Top five, or whatever. Rate them one, two, three, four, five?
You know, if it's 10, or 20, you know, whatever it is, you know, I don't care how many, just-
So if someone will send that to us, we can do that.
Does anyone, just since we had Brandon, does anyone have a problem with, is Brandon looking at that from a branding standpoint?
There's probably going to be no questions about branding, I'm sure.
Yeah, there's nothing on that other thing that makes sense. I was glad that I heard that. Wow, hadn't he thought about that part of it incorporating, you know, how to, how to ask the right, or the questions in the right way to get something out of it?
Right.
It's hard, and Brandon, you've been in construction, I've been in, I'm in construction. Sometimes you gotta narrow choices down for people. They get overwhelmed with a thousand choices.
Exactly.
And if it's too long, to your point, no one's gonna answer it.
So, would it, I guess, let me just ask for clarity here. Would it be okay if I sent the old survey out to you all, you checked off maybe your top 10, what you want to see redone, and then we'll just kind of see what's the most repetitive top 10s?
If that's what you all want.
To Mary's point, you know, your comment that some of those sort of open-ended questions, those may be the ones that get dropped out. You know, maybe it's something that's more succinct.
Or they can, if people feel that they're still important, they can be redesigned, right? But making sure that you get good answers is always about the already identified and formulating the question, and also providing context. Because, for example, if you say, "Well, how big do you want something to be?", and someone says, "Well", and you say, "15,000 square feet" or "20,000 square feet", if someone don't, doesn't know what that means-
That was some of my comments for the subcommittee was, is, I understand what it is, because it came from that background, but, but, I'll be offending you. I used the Sally Helsch way, kind of, you know, description of, you know, she hears, you know, 10,000 square feet, she sees a Walmart.
Right.
You know, because she doesn't have any concepts of what it is.
Is there a template that the board's working on right now for those questions? Like, have they got, other than, no, not yet?
And a lot of that input's gonna come from COG, because they know how to, you know, write these things and stuff, and so.
Sure, we can do that.
So send it out, just mark it up, and we'll get it, we'll talk about it at the work session?
Sure, the work session. We're having a 10-hour-
Take all of Thursday for the work session, please.
And to one of your other comments earlier about the planner and the time and stuff, and how much time it's taking, and, you know, and the, you're right, that the land use plan has taken a lot of our time on it, I'm sure, but that's sort of going to be decreasing.
Until the survey's back.
Yeah. Hopefully. But then, it's also, once that's completed, that's going to trigger several other documents that will have to be created to supplement that. So, you know, yes, we will have a land use plan, but then there's going to be some other things that will be triggered because of the new land use plan that either need to be revised, or, you know, a new document to go along with.
Joe, have you reached out to, I think Weddington is the same company? And have you reached out to them in the sense that say, "Hey, what did you guys do right? What did you do wrong? What would you do differently?"
We got their survey and stuff, and we're-
We had our survey, but as far as working with the company, I think we hired the same company.
No.
We didn't?
We haven't.
No, no, we didn't. That was all the proposal.
They hired Centralina COG to do this-
Oh, okay, okay. For some reason, I thought-
They did. They hired Benchmark.
Okay. Either way, I think it's good to know what they learned in that process.
Sure as points, now either way, Weddington could tell you, "Hey, you know what? Given a multiple choice was difficult or not difficult." So, fair questions.
Yeah, we worked with them, and they are two different families.
Correct.
Okay.
Did you-
Next month, we will have a very thick agenda, yes.
Sounds like it. Did you, were you here for the conversation about, not, if I heard you right, we're not supposed to be talking to fails or about fails? Because it's a C-
Well-
Opinion-wise, right?
Opinion-wise.
We've-
We spoke at the break.
We spoke at the break, and some of those questions already had. Now, they said, you know, "I don't know how we're supposed to do, and how we're supposed to respond." So I was already concerned about that.
Well, the way to go back-
So you're, I'm sorry. So there's no application, but you guys have been approached?
He's talking about the process.
Oh, just the process?
Just, yeah, there's no application. All that we know is that fails came in to us with the dog and pony show, basically the same, or an abbreviated dog and pony show that they gave you. That's all. That's it.
We're aware, staff is fully aware that CUP, quasi-judicial training, needs to take place for both planning and council. And that's something that we've actually been working on at a staff level.
Okay.
Which I don't, I'm not sure if Laura's talked to you about it, but we've actually had training internally that we've actually identified training for you and council to go through.
Yeah, but, yeah. And, like I said, and I asked her, you know, you know, we're getting some, or at least I'm getting some of the same emails that you've got, evidently not as many, but, you know, how do, what do we do with them? How do we deal with them? That was one of my questions I heard.
Anything else?
I think it brings us up today.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have PRG board update. Mary?
We met with council last week, the Park Recreation Greenway Board, and one of the ideas, one of our board members, everyone's support, came up with was becoming a National Wildlife Federation chapter. And council supported that idea. And I just wanted to update the council very quickly. We have filled out the application. It costs $90 to apply the Village of Marvin being a new chapter. We also ordered a lot of their free materials that we can hand out at meetings. That's on the second page. And then, I'll just remind you on the third page, it says it's number one. We only need 150 points to qualify, which we think is easily obtained. But if you look at the next page, it says, "One of the first things that we need to do is identify a team, and I have a habitat team member." It also will take a, they say typically takes on average two years for a town to be certified to get all their, you know, stuff, their points and so forth. We did meet with Christina and Derek. Derek's the park manager. And we believe there will be very limited use of the staff's time. There will be very little money on the part of the village also to win these points. I have asked Bob if he would be the team leader. He said he will think about it. He's on vacation for 10 days. If not, then we'll reach out. But we will, the main thing that we will use the staff for is maybe communications. We'll write them, but if they could just post them. We also talked about using Nextdoor to communicate. But we're going to solicit from the community, people to volunteer to be on the team. We think we'll probably need about three or four, plus the team leader. And once those are in place, then they can actually start going through all these steps. We actually had some good ideas already come out of our meeting, just with the park manager and Christina. So again, we're moving, it'll probably take two years to complete, but I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that we're not, we're going to try to limit the amount of staff time spent on it. It is a chapter. If you look at the last page, another thing they recommend is you come up with a name. Charlotte, these are all the North Carolina chapters. Charlotte has actually two chapters. One's called Crown, I forget the other name, but anyway. And again, we want the community to be involved, so we're going to ask them to recommend names. And I know we're supposed to be branding ourselves, but it usually has something to do with wildlife, but, and sometimes an acronym, but, you know, it's something even that children can get involved in, with coming up with good ideas. There was one for Gaster County, I think they called it PAWS. But, anyway, just to give you guys an update, to let you know, it's separate then, the government, and so we won't be using staff a lot, because it is an independent chapter, but we need your support, like, for press releases, and we need a letter from you guys saying that you support it, and stuff like that.
And your staff members that you're in the three to seven that talks about that you should have on a typical team, where do you plan to pull them from?
From the community. What we're going to do is, we're going to do a communication, we'll get, ask the staff to send it out, we'll draft it, asking for people, may have to get a team leader too. And we're going to try to make it diverse. Tom's very optimistic. He thinks we're going to get a whole bunch of people wanting to be involved. But we're going to try to make it not focused in like one or two communities, but maybe, you know, representative of all the different neighborhoods. He is also meeting with the HOA president. He's going to do a speech to them, because you can also get HOA communities certified. You can get schools certified. Those are all part of the new point system. And they're very supportive as far as helping you, telling you how to do it, and that kind of thing. So we really think that we have a lot of people interested in wildlife. I think that's why they moved to the, like you said, this area. I mean, it's just, it makes sense, you have a lot of people interested in it.
Thank you, Joe.
That's all you have?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we had village hall updates.
I don't really have a whole lot to update. We had some contractors come out yesterday, looking at the property to see how mu- the reasons property, to see how much some of the outfit costs are going to be. I have located some of the older files for the new construction. So once we get numbers for the construct, the retrofit construction, I'll kind of put everything out in the spreadsheet, put it before city camp, or village council, to make a decision as to which route they want to go. So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have some answers on numbers. Y'all can make a decision whether you're going to go retrofit or new build.
So how many contractors do you plan to reach out to?
Two of them came out yesterday. I had reached out to four in total, but two of them were responsive. So if y'all want more than two, I can do so, but-
I mean, it's not an official RFP, but it's something that just gives us a wide, a range of what we could potentially spend.
And we'll have, and we'll have some things that we are going to need to add in if we do the retrofit, and that's the potential probing of the footings that are underground that we don't see. So we'll have to add in some costs for that, which I'm not sure how much that'll be, but I'll try to get some of those buffering costs that'll be added, to put that in the spreadsheet. So when y'all look at both options, you can make an informed decision.
So, as we look at timeline and stuff like that, so is that something we could have a good idea on before we go to, we wouldn't do an RFP unless we actually had the property, correct?
We wouldn't want to go through that process. We wouldn't do an RFP until we actually got an architect to spec it out.
Right. So my point is, is we're looking at the timeframe, because I, quite frankly, I'd like to get to this decision sooner than later. So if this is not viable for the community, then let's move on to the corner where the sign is and stuff. But I've had a lot of good feedback of it, but I just think that, you know, we can get our head around where we can at least get, maybe negotiating with, if it does, if it's in the range of, okay, this is potentially doable, but it all comes down to what can we get, you know, what kind of offer we make for the property.
So the timeline for the process just as a whole would be to get these quotes back, to put it in a spreadsheet for y'all to look at, what it's going to cost to hire an architect for the total project, and then let's just talk about reasons for now. What it's going to cost for an architect to do the specs, you know, putting an RFP together for an actual contractor to come in and do the RFP process. And we would want to know we were going to go with the reasons route before we did an architect, before we actually RFP'd it. So once I get back with y'all on the spreadsheets, then you can really look at the total cost, reasons versus new build.
Right.
Then from there, we'll decide we're going to do, we're going to go whatever way we go, and then we'll go through another timeline for those processes.
Okay.
If we decide that reasons makes more sense, then that's where we'll hire an architect, spec it out. We decide, does it make the most sense? We'll go through and make sure we get the design, the aesthetical design on the outside, which is, I think, where we've had some questions, or it's not completely solidified on the new build.
Okay.
And get that done, and then, as far as I'm concerned, we're ready to RFP on it, because it's already been spec'd out.
Right.
So do you think that we can have, like, we're either going this way, or we're going this way by the end of the year?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I would say within the next month or two.
Okay. Well, two months.
So do you think we'd need, we would need then a special meeting to call if we were going to negotiate or come in with what we would offer for the property, right?
Yes.
Or add it to it.
We'd have the closed session.
Just a closed session.
Especially in the-
Well, I'm just wondering, just because of time and stuff like that. Because we're probably not going to get any information before November meeting, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we will.
I hope we have some for the work session.
Okay.
We, one of the contractors actually said they'd have something back to me by Friday-ish.
Okay.
And the other one said it would be next week before they could get something back, so.
Is it pretty clear, bullet pointed for them, or what needs to be done?
We did a walkthrough, and we went through the ADA report and the structural report. I gave them both of them, so they have all the kind of bullet points that they've got to look for.
Okay.
And when we, when we look at the two different ones, we need to make sure we're looking at them line item by line item, and make sure everything's included, make sure nothing's forgotten. And if so, we need to add some cost in for that as well.
Okay.
Did you talk to them about what I mentioned, that the report is really just a slice of what's going on in that house, as far as going into the soil?
Yes. Well, they, we would have to hire another engineer to do an actual sampling of it. So we'd have to get a, I don't know what they're called, a, yeah, some kind of soil engineer. I'm sure they have a more fancier name than that, but we'd have to hire one of those out to do it. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that now if we don't know if that's really what we're going to do. And I'm just throwing this number out there, if it's $10,000 to get it done, you know, we're going to have to get his permission to actually go in and probe his footings. I don't know if he would be too keen on that. But secondly, you know, I just didn't think it was prudent to spend $10,000, or whatever it is, if we're not going to go that way.
Oh, absolutely. I'm with you.
So, but yeah, that's, that's a buffer that I'll need to, or that's a line item that I'll need to add in addition to whatever these numbers are we get back. And architect, because that's not included in whatever we get back. We need to add architectural costs on top of that, so.
You know, in addition to the costs, with, Joe, when you, when you all just talked about wanting to buy the reasons for town hall, I told you, my, one of my biggest concerns was the ability for the community to meet for these meetings. It just feels like we're back in a house, right? And you suggested that we'd have access to Firethorn. Is this the room that we would always be in?
We could probably, I'm sure, make arrangements. This was kind of last minute, but if we had some sort of deal with them, the way I looked at it, quite frankly, if, if we have any meetings that we feel are going to be more than what we normally get, which is usually three or four people, then we're going to have it at the village. Anything over that, then we have as a backup, typically same day on, at the church, which I think is acceptable for those bigger meetings. Quite frankly, I think we can have everything in this building 99% of the time. I can't see how that building wouldn't work for what we have as far as staff and stuff. And we've had staff go over there. That's why I really like that idea, because it's more of a fixed cost. Because I'm looking at what Wesley Chapel did, and they were donated the land, and they still paid $1.3 million. We have a similar situation with a similar sized footprint, and, you know, we're six, seven years later from when they built that. And to think we can, and our budget's under a million, I believe. So it's more appealing if that's something, because that has history to it. It makes sense, because it's where it's located, and it's, there's going to be a future roundabout there. I hope we can do it, but if it's, if it doesn't make sense financially, we go in there, and these contractors say, "Hey, this is the level, and you have reasons expecting this price, and it is even close" or to what we can, I say we go the other way. We just, we're just, I just want to explore it. I think that's why I wanted to bring staff in there, saying, "Can this work?" Because I think, if you've ever been to Weddington, it's a house.
I've been to Weddington, but, you know, there is a roundabout already installed where our village property is. So that's apples to apples. We have a roundabout.
Right, right.
The, the price, the reasons want $9.75.
They can ask whatever they want. I mean, it's just-
Sure. But let's, let's say they don't budge from their price, and then you add in her numbers, already the numbers are over 100 grand without talking to the contractors. So now we're over a million. We have-
I'm already over there, then.
Yeah, we're over here.
I'm already going over there. If that's the case, if that's the case, I'm already going over there, because that doesn't make sense.
I'm glad you say that. The Wesley Chapel thing you brought up, so I called down there. Apparently, that 1.3 was what was always planned. It wasn't overruns. They wanted a $1.3 million building.
Right.
That's what they got. We wanted something simple. And I'm looking down like I have the plans, but I don't. We wanted something simple, and that's what we designed. It's on a slab to get us past the accessory, or whatever, the assembly code, which is also cheaper to build, and it's just, it's a simple structure. So, that's all I want to say about that.
Yeah, I, listen, if the numbers don't make sense, and I hope, if he can get 900, God bless him, I hope he can get it.
It's all of us, right?
It helps all of us. It helps all of us. In fact, I might sell my house the next, and put up my house on the morning if I can. But it, it is what it is and it's, all we're doing is exploring and saying, okay, does that make sense? Because at the end of the day, one less building. Because I, I can see that as a park in a, in a, um, what do you call it that we talked about? Farmer's Market. And venues on weekends where people ride their bikes into there and shoot.
Let's just sell Christmas trees.
Well, not Christmas trees.
Maybe Christmas trees.
I, I like food trucks. Food trucks, you don't have to build any buildings. They come, they're popular, they can be ice cream shops, they can be whatever, but if you have.
With a branding on it, you know?
With brand, I mean, who knows? I mean, but we're not building any building there. And you're creating a destination for the community that can ride their bike hopefully or walk.
Well, yeah.
And it's one less building in this, where we, everyone's concerned about the high density and stuff.
Like you said, it only makes sense if the price is right.
Right.
We're not gonna spend it.
No.
There's no way we're gonna.
And that's all we're doing is exploring to see if it makes sense. But I think 99.9% of the time, it works for the village based on the meetings we have. How we could formulate that, if we do have a big meeting, I suggested three alternatives. One is obviously the church first, Firethorn maybe second, and the high school would be third.
There is an, I'm not sure if you know, there is another bigger room up here too. We just didn't choose it for tonight.
Or even there's another big room at Marvin Creek has a big, um, I think Rec Center or whatever it is, HOA. We could maybe talk to them and see if they're, they'd be willing to allow a meeting to be held in, in something like that. What I'm saying is there are alternatives. And at the end of the day, you could really convert that garage. You put AC and heating in that garage and that can be a meeting center. If you've been inside that garage, it's nicer than any wall or in my house right now. I mean, it's very clean, very nice, but it doesn't have AC and heating. And it is designated as a separated detached garage. But easily could fit this right here, easily.
Another washroom.
So I think the reason that we haven't done the permitting, continuing that is not to spend the money until we know what we're doing. So, I mean, I feel like we're gonna know something within the next, like I said, I'd like to know something by the end of the year, which way we're going. So since we're talking about village hall, I mean, permitting.
And since you touched on, the, um, the permitting I'm talking about is mostly free. And the permits we had are gonna, if they haven't expired, will expire. And we already spent money on them.
Do we know when they expire?
We haven't, I didn't dig into it. I just threw it out as a topic. And where I was headed with that is why are we spending money on potentially going into another house? Which is fine. I told you guys in the beginning, if you wanna look at it, I don't, I don't mind, but we're spending money, right?
Either way, we're spending money.
We're spending money. Well, the permits we need for the corner, the ones that are left are probably free, which she can check into. For a hundred bucks here, 500 bucks there. We're not talking thousands of dollars. It's, it's a one structure. So there's that. We already did the hard ones. The, I think the Deener permit may be in. That's the hardest one. We don't have to pull the building permit, but even that's probably less than a thousand bucks. But we don't have, we don't have to pull that. I'm talking about the surrounding permits. Everything got put on hold long before the reasons property came to the table. And I, I've always taken issue with that. What, you know, why, why would we have to put our, some, a project has been going on. We can wait to, do you wanna hit that up?
That's up to you guys, Joe.
I mean, I feel like we're talking about village hall.
Okay.
We might as well just talk about it.
So, you know, the brakes got pumped on that two years ago with no explanation. And it's only this year that we're talking about the reasons property. So I, I never got a good explanation of why, why that stopped.
Well, before my time, so I don't know. It was two years ago.
I don't remember what we just talked about.
Yeah, it never stopped. I don't think it ever stopped.
I wasn't around either. Oh.
No, no, do either of you know of any activity going on? So it's our property. We have plans. We've been permitting. But in 2016, somebody suggested pump the brakes and that's what happened.
But I certainly didn't have, I mean, council could have done whatever they wanted to do. And it, it didn't, nothing happened, but this reasons thing was fairly recent because he just put it on the market.
In February.
In February, which, you know, you look at the property and it, it has history to it. It's one of the oldest wells that we have in here. It makes sense because it's on there and it's, it's one less building we have to build, quite frankly.
I mean, if they're.
Because you've got to remember, we sent the deed over to change that, that it's not gonna, if it is gonna be anything, it's gonna be some sort of government type thing. So we don't have to worry about any of that. So that's why I want to put less buildings if I have to. I mean, if we could do a farmer's market and create a venue where you have that whole corner to deal with, I, I think that's a plus.
Just so I'm clear, part of your reasoning for not building the village hall that we've been planning for a decade is because you don't want to see one more building in Marvin?
Not, 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 that was not the only reason. Number one is I'm not sure that we can do that under a million dollars. I don't, I know you said that.
The architect said we can. He, he built, he designed it.
Right.
For that price point.
Right.
It was designed, you're saying right, but then you keep bringing up Wesley Chapel, who designed a 1.3 million dollar building.
Yeah, I don't know if they, they planned to spend, I'm not sure they planned to spend 1.3 on that. But they did get the six acres for free. But either way, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
It was budgeted that way.
We, we had a hard time even just figuring out what it was gonna look like. I mean, at one point, it was equestrian looking and we learned that we're, we have nothing to do with.
Agrarian.
Agrarian or whatever it was, but.
Not equestrian.
Well, either way, I mean, I'm.
There was, there wasn't a horse up front.
I am not opposed if it ends up there in the end. I'm just saying this was an option in the process that came up and all we're doing is exploring it.
So is council okay with us resuming the permit process on the corner? As long as it's free?
Sure.
If something's free, yeah.
I think we need to pay for all of the permits, to be honest, I think. I think the next, next thing, if I'm remembering correctly.
I have no problem with that.
Was that we had the RFP that was being drawn up was the last thing I heard.
Yeah, that was the last thing that, um, in December, that's.
Right, in December, that was the last thing.
Because you had a meeting on December 4th to go through.
So no problem with that at all?
She remembers.
I mean, I think if permits we already have are gonna expire, we need to.
That's, that's what I'm worried about. Because usually they're about a year before they expire.
All right. Anything else on village hall? Okay. Um, next up, we have, we removed, which one? A, right? So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, unfinished business, consideration, consider adoption of OR-2018-10-02 ordinance to consider amending village charter to allow mayor to vote on all matters. I know how we want to start. Anyone wants to chime in and make your points and stuff? I know the community made points. We've received letters from, from the community as well. And I think we probably all have something to say and maybe have for at least the, kind of the reasoning of what, why we're going in this direction.
Who's, who's the, whose idea was it? Whose initial idea was it?
I think, was it, Nick, you brought it to me?
Did you, you brought it to Joe?
Yes.
So what was, so that's where we should start. What was your reason for bringing it to Joe?
All right. Well, I mean, I'll throw a little background. I've been on this council, I think, longest of anybody who took Gordon Chiray. Ten years on this council, four as a council member, three as mayor pro temp, and three as mayor. In all that time, you know, I mean, I've been on the minority side, I've been, you know, on the majority side. And when I was mayor, I mean, I basically never voted because we always had the majority. Yeah, so I very rarely, I think I voted maybe twice in three years on it before it came down to where I had passed the vote. So, you know, I have never had a problem with the, you know, North Carolina, the mayor votes on me to break a tie. Back in, I remember when I was mayor, the mayor did not vote on any appointments or, you know, appointments to boards or anything like that. It was, you know, the council that did the voting on that. I got out, got off the board for two years and evidently in that two-year period, somehow they gave the mayor the right to vote on, you know, appointments to boards and those kind of things. So when it came back up, I said, I didn't think the mayor should vote on it. I thought it should be, you know, the way it was that the mayor only voted in, in a tie, which is, you know, you know, it was a certain amount of votes. Up until four months ago, you would ask, you know, who said, that's the way it should be, you know? It shouldn't be, the mayor shouldn't really get the right to vote on these things. Fortunately, you know, we always had a kind of unwritten rule amongst the council that, you know, anything of major importance, we would try not to do without a full council there. You know, if somebody was absent, you know, was sick or was away or whatever, you know, we tried to, you know, and which I think I did last week, I tried to, at last meeting where I said I wanted to wait for Robert to come in to speak, have his turn to say something on the issue we were discussing. So again, you know, it was never, I again felt that it was fine the way it is in North Carolina statute treaty that the mayor votes, can vote if I could, he doesn't have to vote. The mayor can say, you guys work it out. And I think I did that twice when I was mayor, two different occasions where I told the council, you guys work it out. I mean, I'm not gonna vote on this one. I'll let you, you guys gotta work it out by yourselves. It was, it was brought up about, you know, if somebody can't make it for whatever reason, you know, it's their thing. Now, we've always, at the beginning of the year, we set our, our calendar for the year and worked on it. And it's always been where we asked, you know, anybody have any problems with certain dates and stuff? I mean, I know when Ron was there, he, he went to, well, Simmawton at a certain time. So we requested that, we changed the meeting date to a different date, you know, and we always accommodated each other. And everybody knew that, you know, I went to visit my daughter, you know, in, in May and June. And sometimes in August I'd be in New York, so they knew that them dates, I was, I was not gonna be there. So everybody, and these things were all known for months. This, you know, this year we had, again, I was gonna be away for June. So we, we knew that. I mean, everybody knew that. The, the, you know, the finance officer basically set up the schedule for the budget so that we would finish the budget. I'd say, you know, I would be leaving May 27th, so we finished the budget on May 25th. We had four or five meetings, you know, discussing the budget. When I left on the 25th, there was no contention with the budget, no, everybody agreed that it was fine. Nobody had any, brought up anything, you know, that there was any problems with it. The public hadn't, you know, so all that was gonna be left was, May 31st was gonna be the, you know, the public hearing and then it was gonna be approved. For whatever reason, so. And again, we would talk about transparency and, and, you know, power or whatever you want to say. I mean, Councilman Salomeo put his house up for sale, I believe, in February. I'm not sure of the exact date, but he knew he was moving. Now, he never mentioned it to any of us. I mean, we found out because he was on a web, you know, real estate page. He never, never mentioned when he was moving, he never mentioned, you know, that he was gonna resign, when he was gonna resign. Up until, like I said, when I left May 25th, he still hadn't said anything to me, you know? And we've been on the council leg for years and we're friendly, although we've been friendly and, you know. So when.
You guys actually hadn't talked for.
Well, again, well, that was his choice because he felt I was now on the other side or something. You know, but, but the idea of it was, there was no transparency with the council. Nobody on council knew what he was planning on doing this. None of the staff knew he was planning on doing this. I don't believe any community knew he was planning on doing this. So he took the opportunity specifically, knowing I was gonna be gone, to wait for that meeting to then, you know, suspend the rules and knowing he had the majority now to do it. I mean, to me, that's just wrong. I mean, you know, you talk about transparency, you talk about, and in April, we had a discussion, there was a discussion going on about, you know, change, putting something in our rules, not to change the charter, but in our rules, that we, you know, we wouldn't, you know, any appointments, things like that, appointments designation, whatever, would have to be, you know, voted on by the full council. And Ron's statement was, if you're interested in things, was that, you know, we don't need anything like that. It's all by trust. Well, I don't know where the trust went, but, you know, again, you had something that was obviously planned. I mean, they, they didn't consult our attorney. They basically, two, two members, basically, made a decision for the majority. And I'm not saying majority that were a block, but for three, for three other council members, you know, two, two members made this decision for a five-member council. And it was done in a way, to me, was not proper, you know, wasn't transparent at all. I mean, I don't know, so people say transparency, well, that's about as untransparent as you can get. So that's why I said, to Joe, I said, you know, I, I would have never done that, thought that before, but I said, you know, in this situation, I think we need to have the mayor be able to vote. You know, I mean, it, it really.
What situation?
A situation like that, where you, the minority of people could come in and change and make a major change. We're not talking about a little thing. We're talking about, you know, and with no input from, of the other members of council, no input from staff, no input from the county, the village attorney, and basically no input from the public. And the public didn't know that was gonna be on the agenda. That was, that was added at the last minute. I mean, you know, again, it was, so. And, and it really changes, doesn't change a lot because the mayor only votes if there's a tie. So if, if the council was there, it's two, two, the mayor would vote anyway. If, if it was, you know, if it's three to one, the mayor doesn't vote. I mean, if for some reason, you know, and again, I, I don't like that. I mean, I know it looks like it sometimes and sometimes maybe it is, but I don't like the thing of a monolithic block, you know, that there's these three or this two. Because, you know, we should be having conversation and it should be able to sometimes change minds or whatever. And, you know, I mean, our, our thing is we're supposed to be there as a sort of public, not ourselves. And, you know, unfortunately, I think sometimes egos get a little bit in the way and, you know, and a lot of misinformation gets out there. And I'm, you know, I think, you know, there's been a lot of accusations that are totally, you know, totally without any merit. I mean, if there's any proof of it, then show me the proof. I'm willing to see the proof, but, you know, I mean.
What accusations?
Oh, I mean, accusations that Joe is, you know, plotting with these things for all, you know, I mean, if that, if you in fact have proof, and I mean proof, proof, show it to me. I'd love to see it. And I certainly would be obviously against it if that's what's going on.
The actual lawsuit, by the way, suggests that we are somehow tied to Rayleigh Miller, I believe it says.
Yeah. I mean, to Rayleigh Miller, I wouldn't, I don't know the person by four of them, basically. I never, I don't think I've ever spoken with them. He wouldn't say hi, so.
I'm gonna call a point of order because I do think the subject on the matter is the charter amendment.
Yeah.
And that's the ordinance on the table. And so far, I haven't heard a lot of, I've heard a lot of discussion. We went through this in the last meeting.
Well, and that, but that was all.
Please let me finish.
Well, hold on a second, hold on a second.
I listened to him. No, I'm, I'm gonna finish my sentence.
Hold on a second. It is not.
We went through the last meeting and we did go, go through this.
It is my, is not yours. No, no, you don't necessarily get to call point of order and start talking. It is decided by, can you confirm this? If you look at our rules of order.
We went through a lot of the history of this issue.
She cannot just interrupt for any reason. You have to allow, it is a presiding officer that requires, allows her to talk.
That's what they're here to hear. So I think we should be discussing the merits of the charter amendment.
And we are. This is part of it.
And I'm addressing some of the questions that were raised to me, you know, to my, my situation, but.
Well, we started to go into lawsuits, which I don't know.
He asked the question.
Well, and you said, yeah, you said there's no connection. You don't have any information about.
I have any information about any connection. I have no, I'm not involved with any kind of connection. So if you could show me proof of it.
I don't think anyone ever suggests a jury.
Well, obviously, suggesting it was just putting me in this, in this group together.
Excuse me, if I can, a point, the letter that I believe that you wrote asking the community to, if there was anything that we, that they know of, that you, that you, they could provide to you for proof that we have some sort of, I, I saw it in the letter, the word, the letter that you wrote, basically saying, hey, you know, if there's anyone out there that has any proof of Joe or Nick or Kim with developers or anything, let us know. So it's almost like you're accusing us, but please, I mean, bring on the information. I'd love to see where somehow.
Now, he brought it up.
Right.
And I appreciate your point of order, but, or point of interest?
Point of order.
Point of order. But you're saying you have no knowledge of Joe interacting with anyone from Rayleigh Miller and you're saying you don't interact with anyone from Rayleigh Miller.
I don't. I don't. Not so much as an email. I think I spoke two words to him at the, which Mary was at this meeting, which was at the Terry Shook. He came up and he said something to me like when Terry Shook was representing, he goes, that's something. But there's really no, you know, where I'm negotiating phone calls or anything with him.
No.
You know something different?
Him as Orndor?
Yes. Or them. I mean, I met with him when Chris. Yes. Or them. I mean, I met with them when Christina Frazini invited me over there to talk to them about what they were proposing. And I was, based on what I saw, I was not in favor of any of it. It never came to a vote. But I certainly was not, you know, but if you're, I mean, it's sounding like that I, if there's some sort of collusion or something that I'm, tell me what it is.
Well, no, you guys asked. You guys asked, don't...
No, I didn't ask. I'm still, I'm still, I'm still talking.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Well, you know, you, you said that...
But he has the floor.
But I saw the floor.
He hasn't finished.
How come you're jumping in now?
Because I was asked a question about point of order, and I read it. And now I can provide. Joe asked me a question. Joe, Mary...
You can't just interrupt. You have to let the person speak.
You also need a vote to ask for the...
Right. Okay. So, you wanna take a vote if you can interrupt?
I didn't ask about interrupting. I said, point of order...
No, you kept going, and I, I tried to stop.
I'm asking for a point of order to stick to the agenda because we have rules of procedure. And the rules of procedure require that we stick to the agenda. If you'd like me to pull those rules, like...
No, I, I agree. He was explaining that. So, do you wanna clarify?
The motion is in order if the point is related to the subject at hand. The motion is made to point out an error in procedure or lack of decorum. It can be used to interrupt a speaker. The point of order is directed to the mayor, who either accepts or refuses the point. No other discussion is heard before the point is accepted or refused. If accepted, the mayor immediately grants the floor to the proposer, whose point is heard immediately.
I'm not done yet. I know, I see the smirk. But here's the problem with that. That's when you're not engaged with the debate. Could you talk about the rule that says that when he's engaged in debate, he needs to give the gavel?
I'm not engaged in the debate.
You are. You are. You're engaged in debate.
No, I interrupted because you interrupted him. You were interrupting him.
When you're engaged in debate...
No, you two were debating, and you interrupted him. That's when I said, you said point of order. I said, no, you don't get that right. And I believe it's the mayor who gets to say, presiding officer, that says, we'll either allow to hear you or not. Is that correct? Is that how you said it?
No, you brought up a lawsuit, and so I said point of order. So, at that point, when you brought up a lawsuit and discussed Zorn Dorf, you were, and then engage, no, I'm not done. You did engage in debate. Perhaps you don't know what that definition means. But that is what you did. And at that point, if I'm giving a point of order to the fact that the mayor is bringing up something that is not currently on the table, that gavel and the ability to make that decision passes to the mayor for them. That's the way that works.
He brought it up as a question. And I, you know, what he was talking about originally is there's some sort of us working with developers or whatever it was.
I didn't bring it up.
But you brought it up.
I didn't say a word about it.
What did you, what did you ask him?
He brought it up.
But what did you ask? I know he brought it up.
Is everyone hearing the same thing? I am. I didn't bring it up.
But what, but what did you bring up? What did you question him on? What did you question him on?
He went on, he, he was talking. I let him talk. But then, when he brought up that I made accusations I can't support...
So, let's, let's move on.
That's when I wanted to interject.
Let's, let's move on.
Which I'll wait my turn.
You don't have your time to speak.
I have my time. Okay.
But I just...
I don't know where it was now. But...
That's okay.
You said that you didn't know anything about... But I'm, I'm not gonna lead you. You go ahead.
I said, I don't, I don't, you know, the point that... My, my, like I said, I wouldn't have, except, I wouldn't have thought I would go this way a couple of months ago. But because of this, I think that, you know, it's, it's, the mayor, I mean, needs, or we need, and, and, you know, right now, there's this majority. Six months from now, it might be another majority, another mayor having to, to deal with that kind of thing. But I just think that any kind of, any matter of that kind of substance, especially appointing somebody to the council, which is basically taking away, is basically going over your right to vote on him. For us making a decision on who we put in, should be done by a full council. I mean, Ron made this statement that, well, he's, you know, people that he represents. Well, we ran together, we ran at the same time. I mean, I think Joe got 40 more votes than Ron. I think I got seven less. So, where are his people? I mean, you know, the same people voted for all of us. So, you know, it's like, again, you know, the way it was done was, and I don't, and it's not, whoever did it, if we would have did, it would have been wrong. So, I'm just, I'm looking at it as a fact of, you know, stopping that kind of thing, you know.
But why not put it on a ballot?
Excuse me. Sir, it's not for you to engage. Sorry, this is, I know. But if you want...
Well, you know, the problem, actually, what's gonna happen is the process would be, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, if we voted on it tonight, and we, three to two approve it, it's still not approved. It would then have to go to a second call. It would fail. Three to two on the first call would actually fail. It would have to go to a second call, which would probably be at the work session, I guess. Well, even though I don't want, we would have to be at the work session, I guess. At that point, if it, if it was a three to two again, it would, it would pass. At that point, then, then the...
That's only for zoning ordinances, not for regular ordinances. Just saying.
Is, is that correct?
For the...
For this, this referendum? If we, if it doesn't pass tonight, then it goes to a second call?
I thought it did. If it's the first time it's interviewed.
Right. That's what we...
Which the ordinance, you know, that's a, that's a zoning land use ordinance. I can double check. I mean, it could be wrong. But that's what I remember. You're saying, just to be sure I understand, what you're saying is that if it doesn't pass with the full two-thirds that, that has to be voted on again?
Right.
This ordinance, right?
This referendum.
And then it would, then if it...
Oh, the referendum?
The ordinance. The ordinance.
The ordinance. Okay.
So, it would, it would be voted on again at the, at the work session, which would, you know, be approved on the 25th, I believe. If it was three to two, at that point, the referendum would pass. Then, there would be a period that, that the, you know, petitions and voters, you know, they, they would have to collect, whoever was, would have to collect petitions. And yet, I believe 10% of the registered voters, the signed petitions, that they wanna call for a special election. At which time, there would be a special, call for a special election. Now, it would be too late. According to general statutes, special elections can only be held on a regular, you know, municipal election, when there's a regular election, you know, even November 6th this year. And then, primary, which would usually, like, primary day would, would be May. So, we would probably miss the November 6th election. So, the next time would be, probably be able to be, you know, put on a ballot would be in May. In the interim, Joe wouldn't get the vote from then until May, until that goes, it wouldn't, it wouldn't because, so in actual reality, you are getting a vote. I mean, it's, it's maybe, we are basically giving you a vote because you're still gonna, you're still gonna have to vote on it.
Joe says, work, work it out. Hey, guys, work it out.
Well, I mean, we obviously...
I gave you all this, all this here. Just, hey, hey, guys, work it out. You got a two-two, work it out. I'm not gonna vote.
Well, that's, that's, again, that's, but what I'm saying is the situation where you had two members now make a decision of that magnitude with no kind, no, like I said, they never even told, they never talked to us, never, I mean, after, after the thing happened, I got a message from Robert before the, one, before the one meeting and said, you know, you know, really like you to, maybe, you know, talk to Kim, or, you know, get Kim, or, you know, if you, if Kim would come on our side or whatever. And I didn't respond. But in my mind, I felt like saying, well, Robert, maybe you guys should have talked to me before yous did this. I mean, you know, nobody came to me and asked, you know, talked to me, even instead of, you know, what they're doing is...
The emails, the emails right here. It said, let's get the budget approved. Let's get fire thrown.
No, that's not...
Firework. That's what I sent. It's right here. It's the one. Look at it. And it's the one I put all these attachments showing Zorn Dorf and, and Lavelle and Joe's emails. I attached all of that, that email to you.
This was an email. This was a text message.
This was an email.
Well, I mean, you, what I'm talking about was a text message you sent me.
Okay. This, this is the important one. I was trying to get the budget approved and the fireworks approved. And I said, let's just do a special meeting, get Kim to show up. Just, all we need is a quorum and two items. That's all I was asking for. And then I sent you all this documentation that you said doesn't exist.
Wait a minute. May I ask, you're asking, you were asked for a meeting in June? What special meeting?
This is when the meeting, the June 28th meeting, you guys, or 25th, that you didn't show up to, last chance to do the budget.
Right.
I was, I was not there. I was, I was back till July 8th.
He came back July 8th.
But three of you made a decision, even though he wasn't in town, not to acknowledge her appointment. That's, that's a fact that gets passed over. You three got together and said, no, let's not acknowledge the appointment because we have emails talking about it.
Okay. So, you're right.
But we didn't get together.
They did not get together. That would be an illegal meeting. They did not get together. Yeah, but you still made a determination.
The email I got from one of you said that the majority of council, which would be the three of them, made the decision.
The finance officer conducted a straw poll, and everyone responded to the straw poll, as did you.
How is that not an illegal meeting?
A straw poll.
It's just asking if we believed that that appointment was legal.
There was no discussion. You took action outside of an official meeting.
No action was taken.
We weren't taking it.
Until July 10th.
Yes, there was. You asked, I can pull that email out, too. Not that I really wanted to get into this, because I still think we should be talking about the ordinance.
I agree.
The fact of the matter is, on June 5th, it said, I understand that a majority of the council has decided that the resignation was invalid, and that Mary's appointment is no longer, is, is, is not, not to recognize the appointment. And then it went on to say, then there was another set of, another email, I think it was on the 6th, that said, the council, we have, from the staff, that said they had been instructed not to recognize my appointment as valid. I don't, honestly, I'm not even talking about that personally. The reality is that it is correct. Actions were being taken outside of an official meeting without any official discussion in an open meeting, which to me is just as, if not more egregious than some of the things that I hear other people complaining about. So, I just find it kind of funny that we're talking and rehashing this. If we're gonna do that, fine. But there's still an ordinance on the table tonight. People are still trying to figure out what the reasons are. Let me finish, please. I haven't been able to say anything without someone talking.
Go ahead.
Our rules of procedure also asks this council to validate the merits of something that is put in front of us to doc, to, to decide on. I understand the background. I understand that Mr. District Attorney wanted to be sure that was out. The question was also, well, why, why does he feel this is important? And I guess, to some extent, he's answering that. But I don't know when 10 o'clock is. But I think we probably have to go around the table. And I haven't really heard a lot about the merits of the ordinance.
Would, would you like to opine your own way?
Actually, I'm still curious. I asked that on August 9th, and I got, ironically, I got an answer from Nick. He gave more or less the same one tonight. And I still haven't heard from anyone else. And I know that primarily, that's what people wanted to hear.
Kim, do you wanna go? Do you have anything to say?
Robert, she can do it.
Okay.
I just wanna finish, but...
I'll say it. Sorry, Robert.
I was gonna say.
That's, that's my reasoning behind it. And it's, and Mary, it's really, it's really nothing personal, you know, to you. It's, it's the, the situation, the way it was done was just, in my mind, was not right. It, it, you know, it, it, it was, you know, was not done with any transparency whatsoever. It didn't, you know, it didn't involve the majority of the council, whether, majority being three people, not a block. And it basically took any public, you know, in the past, we had, you know, had people submit, we interviewed them, you know.
But pushing a, a change through like this is equally wrong.
Well, I agree.
And it takes only two council members to do it, just so we're clear.
I mean, if, if what happened before is wrong, we're gonna respond by doubling down on a mistake.
I don't consider it doubling down on a mistake. I think that it's a way to prevent that same wrong from happening again.
Yeah, referendum, because a petition's gonna come, and this whole thing's gonna get shut down anyway. Be smart. Don't, don't put salt into a festering wound. Be smart table.
Well, I mean, and my, and my opinion on that is, if you, if, if you get 200 and whatever, whatever 10% of the vote is, then it's not just 30 people that hear, that we're hearing from, that we're hearing from, you know.
Every homeowners association, everyone is primed to launch a petition. Everyone.
They're right.
That's fine. That's fine.
And, and you guys are gonna continue to keep our looking like F troops.
Okay. Let's, let's just hear from the council, if you don't mind. So, anything else, Nick? Okay.
That's my reasoning.
Kim?
I was just around the room.
Or Robert?
Kim was next.
No.
We'll let you go. Do you have anything to say?
What time is it?
It's 9:16.
Okay. I'll go. I think the last meeting, well, I know the last meeting that we talked about this, I passed out the resolution clarifying mayor and council rules. And, you know, Joe, are you, have you seen this? Are you familiar with it?
I'm sure I am. I, what is it?
It's the, your roles and responsibilities?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I think there's some floating around the audience.
Okay. Good.
So, the council, and I think, Nick, you might have been mayor at the time.
Me, I'm...
You were the mayor? Okay. So, the roles were, were detailed and agreed upon. And they, they've been that way more or less for 20 years. Now, because in one meeting, the minority did something they wanted to do, but no other meetings has that happened, because of one meeting, you wanna get a chokehold on the vote. Now, that concerns me. You, you wanna make sure if one of these, they're gone, that my voters don't have a voice. And that's wrong. And I have a real problem with it. Now, Nick, you mentioned a text or email, and I showed you the, the email. I appealed to you because of the budget and because of the fireworks. And I said, just see if Kim will show up, or Joe will show up for a meeting so we can get them approved. Right? I mean, isn't that our job? That's kind of the basic requirement of the council. I mean, but you said, you know, you were out of town. Apparently, a straw poll, which I, I don't know how a straw poll about something as big as an appointment is legal...
It's in your rules of procedure. We discussed it at the last meeting.
Right. And I also said that it was not to be interpreted, because it's, I can read it again. This was, the rule was not to be interpreted as something that violates the statutes and the meeting laws of the statute. Did you want me to pull it out and read it again?
No, it had to be validated at the next meeting, which is what happened on July 10th.
It doesn't, it still doesn't violate those, that section of the statute. It's not meant to do that. That was not the intent. I'm just, I can read it again.
But in your opinion, Nick, ignoring her appointment was okay?
Um, what are we talking about?
Ignoring Mary's appointment. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out your train of thought that somehow, two council members voting on one thing in one meeting is so wrong that we're gonna change our charter. That's what I'm trying to grasp.
No. Again, my feeling was that it was done, it wasn't done properly, first of all. Suspending the rules requires, you know, two-third, two-third, whatever, three-quarters of, two-thirds of council.
Of the whole body.
Of the whole body. Now, I wasn't there. So, you didn't have the whole body. And the only way you could have had the whole body was I would have had to respond, or, you know, been sent an email saying, we're gonna, do this, do you approve of it? And I would have had to respond back that I have no issue with doing that, even though I'm not there. I give my, whatever, permission, you know, to, to just go forward. So...
Did we add or subtract any items tonight?
But we're all...
Agenda items?
We did it when we adopted the agenda.
Yes. Not, not suspending the rules in the middle of a meeting and adding things. This surprise.
Has this council...
With all, with all due respect, let me, let me, go ahead, finish.
So, you're asking me why, you know, why I fell that way. So, I mean, my opinion was that it wasn't illegal, it wasn't done the way it should, you know, legally wasn't done, in my opinion. Now, I'm not an attorney, but, you know...
So, you're so upset about it, you would change the village charter?
Again, I, you know, it's immediate. We keep saying it's like a heinous thing, but it doesn't really change all that much.
It's a change.
You know, the mayor votes on two-two.
The question's the same. I mean, you're, you're so upset about that one meeting that you...
Yeah, I am upset about that one meeting.
And for it, you will change the village charter?
Yeah, I would. If something like that doesn't happen again, where, you know, two members then take over from three, where that doesn't matter. Like, I'm not saying, not, not, not saying to do, you know, a block. But, you know, to me, that level of, of an issue of appointing a council member, that's not something that should be done by two members without, you know, a full council there.
So, since we're still on me, let me just point out, it's been said by you, Joe, and I think possibly, well, by one or more people here, that we have this procedure on appointing council members. Okay? And it's referenced, it goes back to when I was appointed, when Christina Frazini resigned. And people say, well, see, Robert was done after people were interviewed and, and he was appointed. And that's, that's our rules of procedure. It's not our rules of procedure. We don't have a rule and procedure for it.
No, we don't.
The way we did it was quite legal by statute. And what I.
And can I add to that?
Sure.
Lenny Openchild, there was, Lenny Openchild was appointed twice. And in both cases, there were no interviews because he was willing to do it and he seemed like the right candidate for the job. And in each time, he was appointed.
So it's happened before. You get that, right? And you were around for that. So don't, well, say, say yes for them. Because I.
You voted for it.
Yeah, you voted for it. So.
You, you asked me what my opinion was. I gave it to you. That's my opinion. I don't want to debate it anymore.
But it happened before. And when I was, oh, it's my turn.
I know, just finish your point.
I'm not answering, you're not interrogating me, so.
Well, I think they heard you.
Okay.
But the point I was.
I think I made my point. I think I asked about, uh, once there. If they agree with it, they do. If they don't, so.
Can I ask?
The justification for all this has been that one meeting, that one appointment of Mary, which is such an egregious thing that you all would, would lodge, would spend village money on keeping her out of his seat. But you're willing now to change the charter to make sure something like that doesn't happen again. And you're just, and I'm looking at you, Joe, because you, you had put in writing that part of your justification is we didn't follow a, a process, which actually does not exist, folks. It doesn't exist. When I was appointed, I don't even know that you all advertised it. You each brought someone to the, I'm talking.
I didn't say a word.
We each, you each brought someone to the table. You did, Brian did, Ron did. There were seven people interviewed, but they were all handpicked. So just so we're clear, I don't think.
That's true, actually.
Here's the email.
I didn't bring anybody.
Well, maybe you didn't bring anybody. Well, you might've been, you might've been the one that brought me, which I'm sure you regret now. Okay? But at the time, there was still no procedure. So here's where I was emailed and asked to come in and, and talk to council. I actually didn't apply. They called me.
I said, I, I just think I was the one who brought you up.
So just so everyone's clear, when you get it, when you get an official notice from the mayor that says we didn't follow rules and procedures and we did something egregious, it's not always true. The second thing that's not true, Nick, is you said that I've insinuated or said out loud that there's some sort of, how did you say it? Connection between Rayleigh Miller and?
I never said Rayleigh Miller. I said, whatever, developers or.
Orndorf?
I never, I never said Orndorf.
Okay. And the reason this matters, one is you brought it up and used it for justification. Two is, it just matters that people know, these are emails from, this one's to Ken Orndorf, Michael Lovell, and Chip Suicki from Russ Odell. This one is from Michael Lovell.
Not me.
To Joe Polino.
You were copied.
FYI, this should help pump the brakes on Village Hall. Okay? Anyone can do a public request for this stuff, by the way.
But, but just getting copied an email, did you have an email to me to any of these people where I'm talking to them?
How would you?
But you said no association. I'm, I'm not.
I'm just saying is I've had no, the fact, I get emails all the time. I can't control what emails I get. People copying me on all kinds of stuff. And you've received all that for all the lawsuits we've been in and the public records requests. You've received all of it. I'm not hiding anything. The fact that I just get copied on something does not mean I'm involved in that conversation.
And I actually never, I've never accused you of a darn thing.
But do you have an email from me going to?
There's enough stuff floating around that makes people question.
You have an email from me going to Mr. Orndorf?
You wouldn't ask that if you didn't already know that I don't.
That, that's my point. The fact that I get copied on something, you're making an accusation about me that I'm involved in something that I'm not.
You're the one been waving the master plan around.
I'm sorry.
So.
Okay. And that's referenced in this one. Okay, this one.
Master plan was a, a actual, a, a big topic when we were all voting and stuff. It was, the master plan was a swear word, but I believe the master plan was used, you used it in, in your.
Yes.
You use that terminology in the ladies' plan.
But I didn't talk to the developers before I did it.
And I didn't either. And I didn't either.
I'm just saying me.
I'm just saying I didn't either.
This master plan has a price tag of $163,000 that, um, from, this one's Chip Suicki. Joe, any other ammo for Terry? Terry being Terry Shook. Thanks a bunch, Chip. Now, you may not have responded to it, but it sounds like a pretty friendly email. And then there's attachments. And I, I don't have the attachments either.
Listen, I, I put the, with the Terry Shook thing, I made that all public. In fact, I brought him to our meeting here because no one would show up from council. We had all of planning boards show up and they were excited and I thought, wow. And I was even pumping the brakes. This guy's just way over the top. And then finally, in fact, I think the comment you made to me in the break after Terry Shook did his presentation at our retreat, you looked at me and said, that's impressive. I said, listen, this, this guy knows what he's doing. All I'm saying is, when you look at our backgrounds, no one raised their hammer. And I said, who create, who's been, who, who has experience in creating a town hall in a downtown quarter? None of us did. So we were seeking out individuals and it was all on the up and up. I have no, I have no ties to any of them. All we were doing was listening. Listening's free. Ideas are free.
Yeah, but $163,000 drafted contract is not free.
I don't know what that is even about. I don't even know what that's about.
You know, I wish everyone, in a way, would kind of quit while they're ahead. Because there comes a point where even I can't, I would prefer to get past all this.
I, I do, I would too.
Yeah, but when you say that I have nothing to do with it, it, it's not as if they turned around and copied Barbie. I mean, they copied you for a reason, right?
I'm sure they did.
But my point is that there's a reason that you're copied on it. There's a reason that Mike Lovell is involved. There's a reason that Orndorf happened to be copied on a lot of these things. There's a reason that Chip Suicki was copied on a lot of these things. And then there's a reason why Chip Suicki says to you at one point in one of these emails, he says, you know, we really need the public to pick up some of the cost of this contract. What do we need to do? What can Chuck Kelly present that would have the public pick up a good portion of that contract? Listen, that's, I don't have the papers.
Yeah, and I don't even remember that email, quite frankly.
If we're going to do it, then let's do.
But at the end of the day. Go ahead.
No, can we get, I mean, can we talk about the ordinance?
I agree.
We've got 30 minutes left. We're not going to get through it.
Well.
Anything else?
I know, I know everybody wants to hash out all this stuff again, but.
Understand, I, I, I brought a lot of stuff, not knowing what was going to get brought up.
Sure.
Nick brought this up in his.
Right.
Discussion of why he thinks it's okay. So his, his justification is partly based on this idea that she was appointed illegally. That didn't happen. It's based on Ron and I doing something.
Well, that still hasn't been 100% determined yet by a court that she wasn't applied illegally. So you're saying that, you know, you're making a statement that hasn't been adjudicated yet.
No, attempting to vacate my office was unlawful. That was unlawful.
But the, the, the thing of the rules, you know, the suspending of the rules and, you know, again, that hasn't been adjudicated by a court yet, so.
To be fair, we got with Melanie, Nick was on the phone, I think, Melanie and myself. It was when we called the school of government about the process and how, because we were just, it was a learning mode for us.
Right, you all had a phone conference set up with Freida.
Freida, yes.
You said, should I be involved? And I said, is it okay?
Right, right.
I didn't want to step in her shoes.
So who had the phone conference?
Nick.
And me.
It's on all the invoices. It's.
And it was with the school of government about the process came down to the two thirds. And that's where we said, this whole thing goes away because of about the two thirds rule.
Except that I told you the last time, I wouldn't be fired if you had followed that two third rule.
Right, but, but.
There would be three people, because on, what was it, 13th to the 12th, you appointed, you know, we talk about transparency and we talk about things that are egregious, but you, but again, no offense to anybody who happens to be on the board, but I'll remind you again, because I guess that's what we're doing, you all on the very first night of that, in a, in an.
December.
Orientation meeting, we call it, you appointed three brand new members to that board without providing those, um, those applications to anyone or letting anyone call them or interview them. You did, that, that was a major decision, I would think, right? Almost 50% of a boy, a board appointed without letting the public know that we were even looking for those applications? Number one. And then number two, trust me, I, this has nothing to do with me, but again, talking about major decisions, you also voted with two thirds to suspend the rules and then terminated your administrator at that time. Nobody knew that was happening. So I, I just, again, I'm not in the interest in fighting whether this is right or wrong. But it's, it's, I find it interesting that it's always this, these excuses about what is valid and invalid or what's egregious or is egregious is always about partisanship. It's about whether or not it's egregious for you or, or this side or that side, instead of just a joint agreement on what is just principally wrong and what's principally right.
Right.
So I have trouble believing the sincerity behind these statements where we're, we're drawing the line between what is okay to do when both sides did things. We talked about this at the last meeting. Both sides have done those. So at what point do you just say, look, can we just push this under the rug and try our best to get along based on, I'll say it again, the merits of an issue? Not just on whether it's politically beneficial to this person or that person. Period. And I still, we're still doing it tonight. We're still not talking about the merits.
And to be fair, Mary, and I'll say this, I'm not even sure what we disagree about sometimes. Because you and I have had long conversations and stuff and in this whole battle. And I, I wish this would all go away. We could have some sort of civility. The problem is, and this is for the audience too, where I'm, I'm going to say this and be offended or if you want, is, is, you know, nobody comes to our meetings. Nobody shows up at our meetings. I promise you that. Nobody shows up at our meetings. So everyone got all excited about the May 31st meeting where they did what they did. Okay? So here's the problem I have with it. And I think Nick understands this too, because he came to me.
He looked at me and I'm at you right now. I wasn't here.
I know, I know, I know.
And I guarantee you, this crap is not going to continue.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. I, I'm talking to the crowd. You got up and spoke. I'm sorry, I'm looking, I'll look at someone else. But I will tell you that back in August of 2017, there's an agenda item, Agenda 8, it's on the, on the agenda. Discussion consideration on council rules of procedure, Rule 33 Amendment, mayoral voting privileges on board appointments. So back in April, before that, when there was an appointment, I believe the former council that was in place, they made a vote to make an appointment. Well, I cast my vote and they said, well, you don't get a vote. I said, actually, I do. It's in our rules, 43. So what did they do right away? They said, well, put it on the agenda for the next month and we're going to basically remove that. So it was expedient for them, but I didn't see any outcry. I used to have a vote on hirings, firings, and appointments. And to be fair, back then, when they took this vote on this day on August 8th, and not many of you, if you looked at the minutes, that's fine, but 15 views were hits were made on audio. So not many people listened to what actually happened. And I'll get to that in a minute. But that rule, I used to have the ability to vote on appointments. And they took it away from me, which is kind of a charter change. They, they didn't announce. They just put it on the agenda and boom, I was no longer. And I accepted it, okay? Nick even voted for that. But fast hope not.
I was, I was never allowed to finish. And you just, you just told them a fib.
No, I did not. This is.
The reason the rule was adjusted was because it did not fit the village charter. It wasn't just because.
Regardless of it, I used to be able to have a vote and now I.
It didn't fit the charter.
Okay. And now it didn't. That's fair. So.
Well, that's fair. Let's just.
Well, no, no. If, if, if it didn't fit the charter, you, you ruined the thing, but I used to have a vote. Is that correct?
No, because it didn't fit the charter.
No, I did have a vote. It was in Rule 43. You had an argument with Councilman Salomeo. And he said, no, that's not true. That's not how I read it. And you clearly read it to him. It was a rule that I was allowed to vote. That is a fact. Okay? Fast forward, and again, this is where we don't hear much and everyone's, there's probably 176 hits on May 31st meeting that was very contentious. And this gets to the point of why we're kind of doing this. And it's on the agenda in April 10th, 2018. Discussion consideration of amending council rules of procedure to add a new rule, supermajority required for appointments, removals, hirings, fires, and amend the village and Marvin's personnel policy. It's right there on the agenda. And I'm going to spoon feed this for the audience here. It starts, if you go on April 10th, write this down, it starts at 1:49. At 1:52, Ron Salomeo, as a council member, sits there and he says, we're trying to get the verbiage down and all the words down. He says to all of us, I'm not, we don't need this role, Joe. This is about trust. This is about trust. Go listen to it. It's at 1:52.43. Write that down on April 10th and listen to it.
Supermajority thing?
No, no, it was discussion and consideration of a rules change that we were trying to get.
Supermajority.
It was.
Does everyone understand what supermajority is? It's sort of what we're talking about tonight. It's, it's where the majority can only make the decision.
It was all, it was all about making, how we hire, fire, and make appointments.
The supermajority is not legal.
Right, right.
And that was pointed out to you.
Excuse me. Please let me finish.
Well.
So at the end of the day, no, no, here, it's clearly on the agenda.
Who put that on the agenda?
We did.
You did.
Yes. So we're talking about.
Illegal on the agenda.
No, it's not, no, no, they did not put something.
Supermajority is not legal.
Listen, when, when we wrote this out, no one had a problem with, we were going to discuss consideration of the amendment.
We didn't write it out. You did.
Robert, please excuse me. Let me finish. Let me finish. Okay? We, we added it to for a discussion. And then Ron talks about trust. And we're sitting there, okay, you know what? We're turning a new leaf and stuff. And then it was in a month later that they pulled this thing, knowing that he's going to be gone. And they pull this on and they just surprise it. Now, I've been told that this is about transparency and stuff. This is to protect transparency to the community because our whole thing about these rules is nothing comes on the agenda within 48 hours. It gives you the public fair time to look and say, do I even want to attend this?
We did it tonight.
Well, hold on.
We did it tonight.
On what?
Didn't we add something to the agenda?
Yes.
Village Hall.
Village, we.
Village, Village Hall.
That's something and that's my understanding that we added something to the last agenda.
But it was in the beginning, which you're allowed to do in the beginning of an agenda. You, you, you can do it anytime. We were trying to create a rule that 48 hours that we, we instilled since January. We've tried to adhere to that. So when we mess up, we added some things.
We being the majority, it, it's.
Yeah, and we're trying to, we're truly trying to adhere to the 48 hour notice. So you guys chose after this comment about trust. And, and that's where Nick kind of says, you know what? We're, we're never going to be safe because at any given time, if someone has a cold, they can hijack a meeting.
So this was just Nick's idea. I just want to be really clear on that.
I, he had already told me before that, why he voted the way he did. And then in one of our conversations.
This was just Nick's idea.
He did come to me and then I talked to Kim about it. I said, what do you think about it?
Can you answer anything? Yes or no?
If it was his idea, it was his idea. He came to me and asked me about it.
So that's a yes.
Okay, yes.
It was Nick's idea.
Yes. I, I mean, it, it, listen, I was voted out back in August of 2017. You guys didn't let me vote. So all we're saying is, this is about transparency. We want to put something on if it's going to be on the agenda. I think appointing someone is a big deal. Maybe you don't. I think the fact that was a little bit interesting, the fact that you have a council member that no one opposed the whole budget, the whole time, and then the council member announces he wants to leave it out there for two more weeks.
It wasn't leave it out there, it was put it on the website.
Yeah, but not approve it that night. We, we did not approve it when we were supposed to prove it that night. So hold on a second. Let me finish.
But you all said you were going to be there on 12th.
Please, please.
You said you were going to be at the next meeting.
I, I, I heard you.
And you guys called, you and Kim called a meeting for the forum and didn't go to that either.
Maybe this is why you don't respond to if you're going to come to a meeting, because I believe it was you that called and said you were going to be at the meeting on June 12th. You weren't going to be at the meeting on June 12th. That, we decided.
That was my daughter's college.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
I know it doesn't matter. You, it matters to me.
The bottom line is, you called and said you weren't going to be there. When we, I'd already taken a straw poll and then talked to the, the, um.
Another straw poll?
No, no, no.
You were copied on the only straw poll.
You were copied on the only straw poll. But hold on a second. When we did that and already talked to the school of government, okay?
When you talked to the school of government, you suggested, someone suggested that it's in our rules and procedures, just for the record. And it's not.
What is in our rules?
The appointments. Interview and appointment.
Well, we talked about that. We talked about what happened. And they were discussing about the process of what happened.
It was never said that it was in our appointments.
Actually, there was an email that did say that.
Yes.
It's number 41, our appointments. The phone conference, the phone conference, it was not said.
I don't know. He said that it was meant to do the school of government.
I was present during the phone conference because I read the rule and I know what the rule says.
Rules of procedure and there was no rules of procedure.
Right.
I'm just saying. Rule 41 is about appointments.
Yeah, but not about the filling of a vacancy of a council member. It says there, I can pull it out.
But, but, but in the end of, end of the day, it, it, when you look at this and you're trying to get transparency from everybody and allowing things, the fact that they came in and surprised all of us with adding things to the agenda, what it is saying is, because you just got done saying, this is about trust. And then in a.
I did?
No, Ron did, but you, you went along with this. This is about trust. And then it happens where, hold on a second.
That was that supermajority thing.
They, in the middle of a meeting, suspend the rules. You need two thirds vote, to Nick's point, to suspend the rules. So we believe that you didn't have that two thirds vote. So the whole appointment was, just never happened, even though it happened.
You're the presenter of the meeting.
You're the presenter of the meeting.
Right.
You didn't call the two-thirds. First of all, it didn't say-
At, at the end of the day, this is going to get most likely litigated. We'll, we'll see what happens and stuff.
It's 10, in 9:43, point of, point of order.
But-
We really do need to get to, are we, these poor people have been sitting here waiting to find out whether or not we're going to be discussing at some point this ordinance, and whether there's going to be direction on that. And I really believe we need to get to that point. This will be the third time I've mentioned it.
Do you want to, you had a comment.
I never finished mine, but I'll keep it short, Kim, so you can talk. Nick, so it was your idea, I get that. You, you want Joe to have that authority to vote and change the charter. But don't for a second tell the public that I didn't, that you haven't seen any of this information, because I sent it to you and you referenced it. The, the information showing that there'd been communication, showing that there was $163,000 contract out there, all good reasons.
I referenced it where?
You referenced it in a meeting. You said, "I got your email, Robert." So you got the email, you got the information.
I'm sure I got the email.
You what?
I'm sure I got the emails.
Okay. But in your diatribe earlier, you said that you didn't know anything about anything.
I don't know, I don't know anything independent.
Just a point, there was no contract for $163,000, just to be clear. There's no contract. So you're, you're just, you're being salacious.
Something about the accusations, you said there were accusations out there and that they weren't true.
You said that there were unfounded accusations. I, I don't mean to quote you, but you said something to that effect, and the emails are out there.
There's no communication I had with any, with Rayleigh Miller at all. People were sending me emails and stuff. I'd look at them and that's all I did, never responded to them. Because it wasn't, and at the end of the day, I don't have a vote. And back to my, my original point before I forget this.
At the end of the day, you don't have a vote.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter anything. What it does is, it allows, if, if we have this surprise thing again, if we go and try and trust you and put that olive branch out there, and then you surprise us again and, and we have no control, you could do just about anything. You could add things to the agenda, and you, you could. You could add anything, and it's just not, all we're saying is, "No, we're not going to, I'll vote no," and all it does is table it. And then when we have a full council, I mean, Nick did it for your last meeting. There was a rule change and he wanted you here. He's throwing the olive branch back to you, trying to say, "Look, we want, we're all involved in rules and stuff." All we're saying is, it, it's hard to trust you guys.
Obviously, you always want the majority.
No, well, no, it's hard to trust you guys when you say, "Trust you." And then you just go and do this where you basically upend the whole thing and, and it's a pretty big decision.
Can I, can I tell you? Thank you. I'll try that next time. Can I tell you what's a little bit disturbing to me about all this, though, is that I, I thought we heard each other. I heard you all, I get how upset you were. I think there was bad feelings before. But what's really getting lost in here to me is particularly, look, you guys talked about the policy, the remote policy, to try to, you know, give yourselves as many security blankets as possible. I have no issue with that. You saw me, I was by my, how many times have I been alone? Talk about the majority, sitting right here. But what's getting lost here is that it feels like every single one of us to some extent, including me perhaps on occasion, is forgetting that changing a charter is about how the government is set up. And that's not really about getting, you, you shouldn't be using that to get back at one side or the other. This is about making sure that at this juncture, for this issue, we're talking about what is best for the people, what they believe the government should be structured like. And so far, I've heard every other reason about why this should be, every, every reason I've heard to justify this change has centered around, "Well, this was done before. I want to prevent my political statu, station in the next, or position in the next meeting. I don't like what happened in the last meeting." But I understand all the rules that you guys have. You've introduced a lot of rules and passed them. But we're talking about the charter. To me, call me crazy, but when you're talking about amending the village charter in order to satisfy what seems to me to be partisan political arguments, you, I think we've stepped over a line. That, that's just me. So, and, and then when we go, and I've asked now three times, "Let's talk about the merits of the ordinance," I still keep hearing the same arguments over and over again. We had seven people at this meeting, we had seven people at the last meeting. Each time, they brought up various reasons why they felt that doing this with regard to the charter was something that they were opposed to. Correct me if I'm wrong, I also remember 17 emails, I only, of all of those communications we received, 17 emails in opposition, 14 people in opposition, two people in favor, okay? And it's crucial that we understand the ordinance amendment based on what now the people want, not necessarily what's going to even scores amongst people on this council. That's, that'll be the fourth time I've said that.
All right. But just, just in reply to that, like I said, the, the process will, will be taken to a referendum, which will then go to the people, I want to help make the decision. But we won't be hearing from just 30 people, we'll be hearing from 300 people, or whatever.
Right, and a vote.
You got that many people?
And a vote.
I mean, you'll set up the majority.
Go ahead. I'm going to let, I'm going to let Kim speak.
Instead of approving it tonight, why don't we just put it on the ballot?
Yeah, and I was just going to-
Why are we going to go to the-
I would be more in favor, quite frankly, I'd be more in favor of adding two more council people. But the way it, we poisoned the well than, you know, that's really the answer, is having, because we have, one has a cold and, and we're out. So I'd be more in favor of bringing a, a, two more council people to, to be heard where you don't have that.
So let's look at that.
The, um, you were going to say something?
Yeah.
Hold on a second, please.
And, and I promise I won't be long, Kim, I'm just going to say this one thing.
Hold on one second, guys.
The only thing I wanted to understand, given that we had public comment the last, last meeting, and then we had, uh, sorry, public hearing at the last meeting, we had public comment, the only thing I had written in my notes, and I mean this in all sincerity, now that everyone has had a chance to sort of listen to the public, you all didn't know, I certainly didn't know that it would strike as big a chord as it did. I'm, I'm glad to see people engaged, quite frankly. But I would like just to, before I sign off, ask whether there's any interest in taking the current ordinance and just voluntarily placing the option for the referendum on it without requiring the citizens to have to do that. That's, I'm just curious if there was interest.
In other words?
So you, we have the option, right, right now?
Well, it's on the ballot, you know, to actually make call for referendum, to put it on the ballot.
Yes, either the council can put it in the ordinance and ask-
I think, I think we're probably still going to miss the time on it. I don't think we're still going to make November 6th.
Yeah, because you have to focus for more days.
Not this.
Or it won't be for this one.
Not won't be for this one, it'll be for the following month in November.
Yeah, it'd be, or in primary, you know, maybe.
It'd be the same difference, there'd just be fewer tortures and pitchforks.
Before we, before we consider that, and thank you, I, I would like Kim to-
Also, so I had a lot more to say, but I feel like we're literally beating this poor horse to death again. And we talked about it last time. I, I feel like we've tried to move forward, we've kind of gotten our hand slapped. I, I would like to move forward again. One of the reasons that, again, my reason is transparency. I think if we can all get together and talk about things before we have meetings, then that would be great. We unfortunately didn't have that opportunity when Mary was appointed to council. So as people said in the audience, that, you know, everybody should be at a meeting. Well, sometimes that just doesn't happen, so when we have really important things to discuss, then we should all be there. I have been told that I haven't done my homework on things versus the mayor council, manager council, forms of government, because there are towns in North Carolina that allow the mayor to vote. And just because it's a manager council or mayor council, that has nothing to do with the voting. The fundamental difference between those two things is the firings and firing. So I don't particularly like to be told I haven't done my homework.
From anyone here?
No. One of the reasons that I feel like we could be able to take a vote on this is because over the past two years, other sitting councils have changed the charter twice. The village charter twice without putting it to a referendum.
In the last two years?
Two years.
I think that was the term-
Two and a half years.
-that you lifted out, right, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, you guys, without going to the thing, you wanted to make my term a four-year term.
So I was going on what-
We didn't, you brought it up.
I wasn't there.
No, 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 no. I fought it. I was the only one to fight it.
Or Kim, Kim is speaking, sorry.
You're wrong.
Hold on. I mean, you, you guys can go back and look at it. It was the March 11th meeting, 2016. It was discussion of amending the village charter to change the term of office for the mayor. Robert, you made the motion to begin that process. So I went back and looked, because I was trying to do my homework, and I saw that we've done it before, so I didn't understand the, you know, because people have spoken and said, "Oh, I don't care if the mayor votes, it's how it's done." Well, in the past two and a half years, we've changed the charter twice. So I just don't, I mean, it's-
Without it going to a vote.
Without it going to a vote.
We changed it and reversed it. So it's, it wasn't two different changes. We changed it and reversed it.
No, but you still had to change it back, so-
We reversed the decision.
You changed it one way, and then you had to change it the other way.
Before the June, when you, we had, there was a deadline, which they were, I think-
To amend it. I just wanted to clarify, it wasn't-
Which is changing.
Two different items.
And I was no part of that. If you go back, I was against it.
But it was two different items, because it was changing the mayor's term from two years to four years, and then it was from four years to two years, when you guys got mad at Joe.
Right.
So the other meeting was 3/14/17. So it's not like that we haven't, you guys haven't changed the charter before without putting it to-
I don't mean to interrupt. It really wasn't, because they, I met a Joe, I mean, in reality, I think I was the only one who voted.
I think it was, I remember you saying that once.
I was the only one who voted against it, and I, I had discussions with, with Ron saying, "This is crazy, you know, you, now you got a, you're putting a position of having three people, you know, two council members a day are elected for year terms together. That's a, that's a voting block that could, if they keep going, could be there for 20 years." So I basically talked Ron out of it.
I'm on the record, go back and listen to the tapes. I was against it, because I felt, even though it's a pain in the ass to run every two years, I think if you get it wrong in the community, you have a chance to get it right in two years. But to your point, four years, I think so. I was not, if I was power hungry, I would have wanted the four years. I'm not power hungry.
But the people are speaking now, right? I mean, don't get me wrong, yeah, there's a lot of good points, but right now, there, there's obviously interest in what's happening now. That's, I'll just say, leave it there. I was a part of that decision, so I, I don't know.
Me neither.
I'll just, I'll throw this, I'll throw this out. I mean, in the, like you said, in the progression that I described, you know, having the first call, the second call, then the referendum, it wouldn't make November ballot, it would be May anyway, in the interim, you wouldn't get the vote.
Right.
You still wouldn't. So I, I guess maybe we could just, like I said, make a referendum to do it for, you know, and it would still be May, because it wouldn't make it to the November.
Well, I don't know, we have the funds to do a special election for that, so you'd have to wait until the following November for it.
Well, no, or it could be, it has to be on a regular election day, or municipal election day, or primary election day, somewhere would have-
Just so you know, I read it. Primaries are only in even the years.
Even the years, it wouldn't be in the 19.
Oh, okay.
Just FYI.
And I knew that, so I knew it was going to be November, it was going to be the next time. Which is a full year, that I wouldn't have any say on it anyways.
So it's the same difference either way, whether we-
Assuming you get the petitions.
Well, I mean, that was-
Okay, so, is everyone, Kim, did you finish? Because I really feel like she didn't really-
I mean, yeah, we, we've, I mean, we have to wrap it up. We've got five minutes left. So we're either going to table this and we'll vote next meeting, or we take a vote now.
If Nick's good with, instead of making the public go through all this, just end up where we're going to end up anyways.
Why don't we, why don't we table it through, through the next meeting, and then we can-
I think it needs to be on the November meeting.
Yeah, it can't be on the worst of-
Like I said, it's not going to get, either way, it's not going to get in this year anyway, so, you know.
Well, can I just say that, I think that the public, to be considerate?
Which one?
I think that it's only fair, that if, didn't you just, I did read up on that rules of procedure that said, and you were right, it's not just land use ordinances, it's general ordinances.
Right, the first one, it's in the-
Yeah. So at this point, I think it's probably fair to, wouldn't it be fair to just take that vote and see where we're landing, since we practically are there anyway?
It's not going to pass tonight, anyway.
Right. But at least we'll, we'll have said that we've gotten through that first obstacle.
Okay, so let's, so let's take a vote. So I'd like to make a motion to consider adopt ordinance OR-2018-10-02.
Further discussion?
Any further discussion?
Further discussion, please. Let me ask this, so if we, if the vote, the majority says nay, doing-
You need two-thirds to pass tonight, otherwise it goes on the next meeting, and it only and it only needs to pass by a simple majority.
But if this doesn't pass, we can still make a motion, just to go ahead and put it on.
Yes.
We're running out of, we're running out of days, too, the 60-day window, or whatever it is.
That's right, yeah.
It doesn't pass today.
Right, so if it doesn't pass tonight, it doesn't pass the next time with a simple, it goes to a referendum.
If you all wanna find out if the public wants to know, instead of making them go through a petition, this is the, any further discussion. Instead of making them go through the petition and all that stuff, which they're gonna do, it's already in the works, let's just put it on the ballot, the next available ballot, whatever the statute allows.
November 2019.
So let's take this vote, and then if it doesn't pass, I'd like to make the other motion. So let's go ahead.
Well, if it doesn't pass, then it had, then the public has an opportunity to file the petition.
If it doesn't pass...
I don't think so.
No, it's the next meeting.
It's on the next meeting.
Yes.
I'm gonna follow up with a motion, I'm just telling you in advance. Either Nick or I will follow up with a motion to go ahead and put it on the ballot.
I don't think you can do that.
You have to take the second vote.
You have to take the second vote.
It has to be introduced once.
Okay.
Do you wanna, do you wanna, you wanna rescind the original and try that motion first?
Kim made the...
Kim made the motion. She has to rescind it.
I didn't mean it that way. I mean, do you wanna ask him to rescind that motion and try...
I think we need to talk about it some more. So in order to us, to get us to talk about it some more, if we vote, it's not gonna pass, and we can talk about it at the November meeting.
Because we have that 60-day...
Right?
So it's not gonna pass, it's gonna go 2-2.
We can try to talk.
My only reason for doing it is, so these folks can go to bed tonight knowing it's done. You know, it'll be on the ballot next November. That's my reasoning.
Yeah.
I'm coming with me either way.
Right, no, I understand, I understand.
I wanna talk about it some more. I'm sorry, I didn't...
So she has a motion on the table, then, to... All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Nay.
And I would vote aye, but that would still mean we didn't get two-thirds. So then we move it to the next...
November meeting.
November meeting.
No.
Or we go to work session, there's so much on the work session.
The first time it's expired? The first time it's introduced, it does. I don't think for the second time it doesn't. No, I'm talking about, there's a deadline that I think the ordinance has to pass within 60 days.
When does that publication?
August, August 30th.
So it does have to be in October 25th?
I think so.
So it's gotta be the work session, okay.
But instead of a work session, can we do a special meeting in the evening when people can come? The work session?
That might be a nice idea.
All right, can we talk, can we, we have to be out here like right now, so can we, can we...
I'm okay with that.
Can the administrator send a email?
I think we've heard enough from everybody. I think we have the general...
I think he...
No, I think he means from...
Yeah, of course, but, you know, having...
Because you don't, you don't have public hearings, you're just here to listen. You don't have public comment in these special meetings.
I don't wanna speak on behalf of all the public, but I think a lot of people would like to be able just to come and hear deliberation.
I do, yeah, of course they come in. It's an open meeting.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion to table all of new business and agenda items and move to adjourn.
And the unfinished rules of procedure and everything.